...under presentation, so they'll be down.
I'm good. I need you. Thank you for coming. Okay, we are reconvening from closed session. I would ask our city attorney to report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. City Council is in closed session this evening. Has the City Council on conference with Labor Negotiator. Council received an update and there's nothing further to report on that item. Council is also in closed session at the Redevelopment Agency for Real Property Negotiations and there's no reportable action on that item.
Okay, we will have roll call. Councilmembers Powers? I am here. Singleton? Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne? Here. We will pause for a moment of silent prayer and then we will have the flag following that. Mark, would you please, please, in the place of...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Liz, would you read the video segment, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I would seek agenda approval. Is there anything you want to pull or delete?
Okay, I have one. I would like to discuss two items if we could together. Under the Information Consent Calendar, which is the number four, student intern job description and salary range. I would like to pull that and discuss it at the same time if we could with City Council Office, which is the student intern for mayor, for the mayor.
Okay.
I think they kind of go together.
They do. You really do. Also, I want to approve the proclamation for older American months.
So... I have one. Go ahead. You go ahead. I need to pull number one for correction, the minute.
Okay.
And actually, the other one was pulled earlier.
Is there another one?
Yeah, the other one was already pulled.
Okay. We're going to be out of our regular order a little bit tonight for special reasons. So at this time, we will do public comment and we would like to, at this time, do public comment regarding our Chief of Police, Lauren Catalico, who this will be his last meeting. So we want to take some time to honor him and his service at this time. And I think you have a list of people that want to say things, or do you want me to start off?
Well, Dave Dolgren, if you're there, you want to come up first?
Lauren, I think you're going to have to come up too. You are the star of the show tonight.
No hiding in the background.
Yep, you got to come forward this time.
Hi, my name is Dave Dolgren. I'm a resident of Galt, going on 19 years now. I'm going to be a little emotional here because everything comes to the surface. I was originally from San Francisco, California, and I've done things here in this city that I never thought I would ever do in my life. And I've had a lot of people help me along the way. So, good evening, Mayor and council. I first met Chief Lauren Catalico in the community room of the police station during a meet and greet event held for him five and a half years ago. I had no idea at the time that a friendship would begin a few years later. I would see him on occasion at Save Mart, Deli Section, getting something to go. I did not realize that he was out on the streets in a cruiser at that time, just to get a break from his office routine. I found out later this was not unusual, as Lauren liked to be with his fellow officers, in his words, quote, "out there catching bad guys," unquote. In the fall of 2008, I heard about a ballot measure for police services and decided to check it, check it out over at the police station. Who greeted me at the door with a hearty handshake and a pat on the back, Chief Catalico, and many others at the time who was in the room. The Measure R campaign was underway. Thanks to the citizens of Galt, Measure R was approved and within a few months, Chief Catalico was able to get new officers for his department. It was clear that Lauren earned trust and respect from the Galt voters, as well as my After it was all over, I approached Lauren and I said, "Lauren, I feel like I got a big hangover. I'm going to miss going over to the police station Wednesday nights." We did that for two and a half months, meeting and working and campaigning for Measure R at that time. And at his suggestion, he says, "Well, it doesn't really have to be over." He says, "Dave," he says, "how about submitting your name and a letter of interest for the Citizens Committee for the Measure R as part of the ballot measure?" And which I did, and I was very grateful that I was seated, not by this council, but by the former one. It seems funny, you can plan what you're going to say at home, you can do all these things and meet people and everyone says to feel comfortable and they don't worry about a thing. But when you get up here, you remember the person that you are honoring, how much he's helped you. I was shy, I had, somebody had to break my shell so I could escape, and it was Lauren Catalico that did the job, as well as a lot of you folks sitting up there that I'm looking at right now, and I thank you all. So, Lauren, you're not going to get away from me without anything else besides being choked up and maybe a tear or two, but I've got something here I hope you can enjoy during your retirement. The four gold bows represent the four stars on your lapel, which you proudly wore and did a great job as a city adult for the past five and a half years. Thank you so much for allowing me this time. It's very important to me and I hope I got you all right. I'm a little bit wound up right now. We've gone through a lot together, defined generally, great job we did for the city of Galt. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
For those of you who have not attended previous council meetings, since Dave has come to Galt, he has become a real important part of our community. He's sort of expressed that himself, but we have lost a few other important people in the past year or so, and so Dave has sort of become a tradition of saying goodbye in his own special way. So we had to have him up first to carry on our tradition. We're also honored this evening to have Senator Ted Gaines to help us honor our Chief of Police. And I was wondering, did you bring your lovely wife with you?
I did not.
Oh, how disappointing, how disappointing. But you certainly are welcome to come up now, even without her.
I'll let her know that when I get home, by the way.
Thank you.
But yeah, thank you so much for having me. And just a little bit of introduction about myself. I did have the pleasure of serving on Secog with Darrell Clare, and I want you to know that he represented your city very well, and I respected him deeply in terms of what he did. And I have now an opportunity to recognize another hero in your community, and that's Police Chief Lauren Catalico.
Catalico.
Catalico. I apologize. And what I'd like to do maybe is just go through a couple of the highlights here of your career, if I could. And the resolution, this so you can see it though, is a joint one with Joan Buchanan and myself. Joan is in the Assembly and I'm in the Senate, so we're offering this to you, Lauren, jointly. And it just talks about a great career in law enforcement and embarking in a law enforcement career in 1981 as a police officer with the San Rafael Police Department. Lauren joined the Walnut Creek Police Department the following year, and over the next 24 years, she obtained invaluable experience participating in drug stings, detective work, and administration assignments, earned numerous commendations, and attained the rank of Lieutenant. And in November of 2006, accepted the position of Chief of Police for the Galt Police Department, where he has provided visionary leadership and overseen the institutions of beats and increased insurgent oversight of other officers, and the updated department's old radio system to a new, countrywide, state-of-the-art system. And also increased the number of staff and personnel, and his leadership has guided the efforts and demeanor of the department to conform to the high standards expected by the public and earned him the respect of his peers. So it's an honor to me, and it's resolved by the Assembly and Joan Buchanan and myself to honor Police Chief Lauren Catalico. Catalico?
Catalico.
I apologize. I'm so sorry.
We've all been there, too.
For his many years served and a well-earned retirement. Congratulations.
Senator Gaines, we are indeed honored that you would come to our town to help us celebrate, if we can say that, the departure of our Chief of Police. Thank you so much for coming to Galt.
Thanks for coming. I appreciate it very much.
We are also honored to have our county supervisor, who has actually been serving this community since he was 18 years old, I understand, and he still looks 18. And he wants to come up and help us share our appreciation for our Chief of Police.
No, I don't think I would. I'll take the compliment anytime, so. Well, I'd like to thank Mayor Payne, members of the council for allowing me to be a part of the program this evening, and I would just note that mine wasn't wrapped as fancy as Dave's, nor quite as large as the one that Senator Gaines presented. So we're kind of in between here in the middle, but it comes with, I think, the same sincerity and heartfelt appreciation that both Senator Gaines and Dave made their comments to Chief Catalico on his retirement. And I would just note that certainly in any community, one's safety, both within their person and certainly within their home and within their business and so forth, is primary. If you don't have a safe and secure community, as all of us well know, many things then fall away from the standpoint of quality of life, and whether it's your schools, your parks, your streets, your community life. And so it's very, very important to have good men and women that serve the community, both in the ranks, but certainly in the leadership position. And I think Chief Catalico has certainly been a good role model for not only the folks here in this community, but certainly in communities that he served in previously. And I know he's a native Californian and certainly spent most of his life, certainly his career, in Northern California, and I think we're very fortunate and blessed certainly here in this community of Galt and the surrounding environments to have had him for these past four plus years in serving this community in a very, very important way. And I would just note, too, that there's a lot of wherethas in the proclamation, but I think it boils down to that each and every day that you serve in any pursuit, but certainly in the area of public safety and law enforcement, and obviously there are many risks that go along with those types of jobs, you are doing the work on behalf of people and certainly helping them to feel, as I said a moment ago, safe and secure within their homes, within their community, and it really does, I think, provide a good basis for quality of life that people, in many cases, they really, I think, desire to have that and aren't able to achieve that. But here, certainly in this community, I think, due to Chief Catalico, to his leadership, to the men and women of the force, and certainly to your leadership as council members in this community who have supported, and I would just note that of all the measures, I think, in California, there were probably very few that had a primary law enforcement take to them that the community stepped forward in very difficult economic times, but chose to put an additional tax burden on themselves to, I think, ensure that the level of support in this community. And so it's really a testament to the folks in this community as well. But I'm very pleased to join with all of you this evening, to be able here to recognize Lauren, and we all relate between Chief Catalico and Lauren, but he was born Lauren and then obviously became chief a few years later. But to recognize that now he goes back to being Lauren, to be chief to some folks for a lifetime, but I want to wish him the best of everything in his retirement. I know he won't be too far away, and certainly he's made friends that will last a lifetime, and he's left an impression in this community that will likewise last for a very, very long time. So Lauren, if you want to come forward, I want to recognize you, present this to you. My congratulations on behalf of Sacramento County and the people of this community and throughout Sacramento County. Wish you well, you and Maria, for good health and much happiness in years to come. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, now if we could have Chris Smith come up.
City Mayor and honorable members of the City Council, my name is Chris Smith. I'm the Galt Police Officers Association President. Membership, approximately two weeks ago, voted to present Chief Catalico with a gift, and I'm here tonight to present the gift to him. It's like, it's going to be a nine millimeter, actually forty caliber slot. And we already gave the sheriff the heads up in that county to make sure we do both. We also have a shuttle box that our P.O. and M.S. put together for you.
Wow, thank you so much. That would mean a lot right there. That'd be a whole picture.
How awesome. Oh, that's beautiful. That's beautiful.
That's all.
Oh, she didn't have that because she...
Okay. at this moment, at this point?
I would. And Maria, I would ask you to come up too, but you're in the middle of the aisle, so if you don't feel like coming up, then that's okay. But I have to say a couple of things about Maria. She has come to this community from the Bay Area and has really become an important All the dogs in Galt especially have gotten to know her at our dog park, and we laugh about that, but that is an important part of our social life. If you have a pet, you know how important that is. But we're going to miss you, Maria, almost as much as we're going to miss Lauren, and I wanted to say that to you. Okay. Well, Lauren, our plaque is smaller than Senator Gaines', and even smaller than Don Natale, but the wishes and the feelings that go with this are just as large, maybe larger, because we've had, I say we, I think everybody in this room has had the privilege of knowing you and the impact you've had on our community. I especially feel emotional about the way that you have become a part of the citizens on the street level. The love that you have shown for our youth goes beyond your normal duties, and those are the things that make you a very special Chief of Police to me. You've protected our homes, but you've also loved us. Thank you so much. I get it.
Pretty rare.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would. Did you want to go to Andy or...
Yes, that's all right. I'll wait for her.
Chief, I want to tell you that it's been a pleasure for me, too, to know you these past couple of years. I got to know you, too, when Dave did, when we were working on Measure R. I think that you stand well above, you did a great job here, and I'm going to miss you, and it was really a pleasure knowing you.
Counsel Michelle?
Yeah, Lauren, I just want to say thank you for being here, for the years you worked as the chief, and the many years that you've been in the fire service. You have obtained the top rank as chief, and as is in the fire service, you'll always be a chief. So thank you.
I think at this point, we all need to take a break, because we've got some serious work ahead of us, but we're going to stop a minute and celebrate. We have some refreshments out in the lobby, give you a chance to say your goodbyes to the chief, as well as his wife. So I'm going to declare that we're going to have a recess to the lobby, and then we'll come back for further public comment. Oh, Lauren, I guess I should give you a chance to say something. I'm not used to you doing that, but...
Well, fortunately, I'm a pretty brief speaker, but I do want to take a moment to say some thank yous publicly. And first of all, thank you to the council and to the city manager for the support that I've gotten as the Chief of Police here. This job doesn't happen without council support and manager support, so I do appreciate that. Next, thank you to the police department, the officers that are here and those that can't be here. No words can describe how proud I am of this department and how much they do for the community. These are the people that are really here and a guest, the folks out and the folks at law, so we're real proud of them and they do good work. Next, thank you to the community. The community has been there for us all the time, and they should be proud of this department, and our department needs to always remember this is why we're here, to serve this community. And then probably the biggest thank you is to my wife. Thirty-four years of marriage and three police departments and lots of late nights and dinners that didn't happen, dates that got broken, and now maybe we won't do that so much because we're going to be retired, so. Thanks, Maria, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned to the lobby for some refreshments and wiping our tears away. Okay, we are turned to the lobby for some refreshments and wiping our tears away. Okay, we are turned to the lobby for some refreshments and wiping our tears away. I don't know if you've been coming here. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. And I didn't know if you like, like, some of these things. And we can pay for it, we can afford it, we can afford it. Can we have council come into the council chambers, please? I thought I'd try. You need to give me lessons. He looked very touched.
He looked like, he was close.
So, did you try, did you even have one thing?
What?
Did you even have one of the little things?
He popped it off.
He should have popped it every time.
I agree.
Not for Mark, for sure.
Okay, not.
Mark doesn't get it.
Although Mark likes it.
I'll take this share.
You know the funny thing?
They don't miss the reward.
Funny thing is?
Yes.
You're talking the other morning, starting?
I know.
I don't know.
Hey, I needed to wake up.
I'm afraid I'm going to drink the coffee before I lie. You'll be like texting me.
And the mayor is...
Yes, that's what we're doing next. Now, Randy, did you want to bring the job descriptions down with the intern at that?
I want to do that at the same time.
Okay, so, can we bring it down?
Can we just do the consent and then bring it down?
Yeah, okay, that's all part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way we'll just drop it.
I just want to bring it up, take it down. We're going to take it down and do it a bit more free. Okay, come on, folks. Get back in here. Hello, that's council. We can reconvene, then I'm going to start calling the public conference. Okay. Okay, we are reconvening, and we're going to complete our public comment at this time before our presentation.
Okay.
Okay, Dan Jimenez?
He's in the lobby. I'm sorry, I didn't know you came in, Dan.
It's your turn.
Danny Jimenez and I live in the city. I'd like to read a little bit of an editorial that came out in the Sacramento Bee a couple days ago that resonated with me. It starts off by, "The city of Bell, pay scandal highlighted serious flaws in the California open government laws. Now a proposed constitutional change wants people to guarantee more sunshine to the golden state. That's how government openness was achieved in the past through the actions by citizens and new organizations. The California Legislature passed the Brown Act in 1953, signed by Governor Earl Warren. The act ensures that publics can attend and participate in meetings of local legislature's bodies, with certain exceptions. The Brown Act was followed in 1967 by the Bagley King Open Meetings Act, which mandates open meetings for state agencies, and in 1973, the Grunsky-Burton Open Meeting Act applies to the state legislation branch, bill was signed by Governor Regan. In November of 2004, eighty-three percent of the California voters overwhelmingly approve Proposition 59, which gives constitutional protection to the objectives embroidered in the State's Transparency Act. It states, "The meetings of public bodies and the writings of public officials and agencies shall be open to public scrutiny. The measure established the public's right to know what their government is doing." Today, unfortunately, California ranks a mediocre seventeen out of fifty states for its open records law, and a dismal forty-five for its open meetings law, according to the recent BGA A Daptor Integrity Index. Once a national leader in the open government, California now receives an F for its open records law from the National Freedom of Information Coalition and the Better Government The 1968 California Public Record Act now contains forty pages listing records not required to be disclosed. California transparency law, too many exceptions and loopholes, and too few teeth to ensure compliance. Reform is long overdue, sponsored by the California Newspaper Publishers Association and introduced by State Lee Yeats, San Francisco Senate Constitutional Amendment VII. If approved by two-thirds of the legislature, would place before voters at the next statewide valid measure stating, "Each public body shall provide public notice of its meetings and shall publicly disclose any action taken in open or closed session." SCA VII could be worded stronger, but it's worthy of public support. It could serve as a blueprint for more transparency. California needs such requirements, states and local government to disclose the salaries and benefits of all employees as a matter of course, without forcing citizens to ask for information through the Public Works Act. Such affirmative disclosure in the latest trend in government transparency, the people and the private sector must lead the way because history confirms that politicians won't. Now, the reason that resonated with me is in the past, not only this council, but councils before, citizens would come up and want some clarity on certain issues, and in most cases it wasn't coming. The answer they got was, "Thank you for your comment, and you're asked to be seated." Hopefully, this thing gets passed, or when citizens do want to inquire about a certain issue that they want clarity on.
Jimenez, your time's up. Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Well, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, Ray, what's your last name, Ray?
Coramir.
Coramir. That's okay. Thank you.
You shouldn't have any problem.
Ray Coramir. I'm glad to see we had some good turnout, some with center of the game here, and not totally, but they didn't stick around to watch the fun. Anyway, my comment is, I have several things to bring up. The Greek meat thing was very good. I had a chance to meet a lot of people. Mr. Cruz, you weren't there because you weren't feeling well. I just, you brought up the road that on Walker Road, on the county road couldn't be done because of blah 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 this. Well, I want to let you know that we, the city of Gulf has done many county roads. The last one done from Live Oaks to Twin City Road was the county road, and we spent four hundred thousand dollars. Now, our mayor here told me the other night that the city doesn't have the money. So, I'm wondering how we got twenty-something projects going on. We've got mileage being paid to people that work outside of the city of Gulf when we hired them and everything else. Last week, we approved a fifty thousand dollar parking rec thing on it as we released our parking rec guy, and half the people in the city's not going to use it because some people who have computers go up there to try to get pages and something, they're going to get charged for whatever they need to do. We're spending sixty thousand dollars on a railroad yard to listen to noise out there. Well, I can go out there for less than that and put my little thing up there and find out how much noise is going on. It's kind of ridiculous. We just now sent, so tonight, we're discussing three hundred thousand dollar streetlights. What are we going to do? You know? And then, we're spending thirteen thousand dollars on a art festival that we had people doing it for free for twenty-plus years with no money, and the city wasn't spending any money. Now, we've spent thirteen thousand dollars. And now, we've got interns coming up, and the interns, there's something on, but now we're talking about money for interns for working with the mayor and doing whatever else they did. When I worked for an intern for Colorado's Morehead out in Glendale, I was proud to get his name on my resume so I could use it to yip. And the other thing, the last thing I got upset about, I watched the meetings in Sacramento up there because I was up, I had a meeting up there with some legislation up there. I watched a city council last week, and an individual by the name of Al Baldwin spoke up here, and there was a lot of sneaking and a lot of things going on by our city council that elected citizens should not behave that way. Al Baldwin... Al Baldwin is, we're lucky to have Al Baldwin in the city, watching for our cost, watching everything. He's a renaissance man and a nuance of great things going on. As my grandmother once said, that Will Rogers is one of the greatest people she ever met. In my opinion, after listening to her talk about Will Rogers, I considered Al Baldwin or Will Rogers of the city of Galt. And we should appreciate the man for his outstanding job. And it's really sad that what happened to him two weeks ago was totally wrong. Thank you and have a good night.
Hey, Rick Walters.
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Walters and I lived in the city of Galt eighteen years. Tonight I was going to address the wastewater upgrade issue that I have with this council in the tune of $12 million. I spoke with Don Nattoli outside there and asked him, if we couldn't get anywhere with our city council, what would be the next thing that we would do? He suggested, he talked for a while and he suggested that we meet with the city manager and go over these things with him and then come back and present our findings to the city council. Because from what I can tell, there's $12 million that's been collected as of December of this year. And there's nothing in any paperwork anywhere that has that accountable for. I can't find it anywhere. So, I've met with Jason at his leisure, he can call me at any time. And our group will meet with him and we'll go over the facts and figures. And then what we want is to make that public in one of these forums like this. Thank you very much.
Okay, Woody.
If you see new disabled signs on some of the businesses, they're all blurred out and all that. We've been donating them for probably about six weeks. The post office has got them. And also, we furnished thirty-three meal tickets from Benny's to the poor people. I got the list from, what do you call it, the welfare? And we did that last month.
Thank you, Woody.
Thank you. That's all the speaker sheets I have.
Okay, seeing where we are in this agenda. Before we go to presentations, I pulled off the consent calendar number five, which is the proclamation for Older Americans Month. So, before we award this, we kind of need to approve it first. Do you want to read it? Do you have it? Well, you can read it.
Recognizing May 2011 as Older Americans Month. Whereas the city of Galt is a community that includes citizens aged sixty-five and older. And whereas the older adults in the city of Galt are among our most treasured resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by diversity and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our community. And whereas, increasing numbers of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining strong and active for longer than ever before. And whereas, the older adults in the city of Galt deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of our community and our nation. And whereas, our community can provide that recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans, by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, providing individualized services and support systems to maintain the dignity, independence, and self-determination of older Americans as they age, combating ageist attitudes by honoring their past, present, and future contributions. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Galt, California does hereby proclaim May 2011 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to honor their older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for many of them. Our recognition and involvement of older Americans can enrich our entire community's quality of life.
You've heard the proclamation. I would entertain a motion to approve it. It's been moved by the vice mayor and seconded by Councilman Singleton. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
So, now, having approved the proclamation, I would ask Darby Patterson, who is here from the County Commission On Adult And Aging, to accept it.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Payne and council members. And Mayor Payne is also a fellow commissioner with me on the Sacramento Adult And Aging Commission. You know, I'm not going to read what they prepared for me to say because your really excellent proclamation said it all. And very eloquently, you covered every point. But I do have a couple of things I wanted to share as soon as I accept this wonderful proclamation. Yes.
Fantastic, you are.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, we want to have a picture.
Okay.
Photo of Shel.
I have a couple of figures here that I think are kind of interesting that we talk about a lot. In 1963, there were seventeen million Americans who were sixty-five years old. By the time we reached the year 2000, there were thirty-seven million. And now, by 2020, it's estimated there's going to be fifty-four million adults the age of sixty-five. So, I am pleased to be joining that rank this year. I'm happy to announce that. I also want to say that, one of the things I was really pleased about in your proclamation is how you said changing the perceptions about aging. I was at a meeting in which Assembly Member Marek Yamaada said that the state of California actually considers a person who turns sixty-five an elder. Now, I do not consider that an insult because to me, an elder signifies wisdom, respect, and dignity. Somehow, the name elderly, senior citizen, makes me feel lesser. And I feel more to be arriving at sixty-five, being proud of being an elder. And I'm hoping that I'm going to be able to fulfill that role really well on the commission and also in my community as well. I'd like to see us change those perceptions because we are not going to be the folks that ran off to Florida who do nothing but golf, play bingo all the time. We are going to be active, contributing, alive, healthy aging, taking care of ourselves and taking care of our friends and neighbors in the community. I hope that as we honor our older citizens and our elders, that we keep this in mind, respect what they brought in the past and what they will bring in the future as we move forward to our whole great baby boomer generation. So, on behalf of the Adult And Aging Commission and all of us who are on the very precipice of that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Darby. I would also add while she's leaving that the County Commission On Adult And Aging is very, very active politically in standing up for the elders, I'll put it that way. And we also have in our audience our chairman of our local commission on aging. Aggie Hatchey is back there and she's not going to come up, but she needs to be recognized. I don't know.
Stand up, Aggie. Stand up, Aggie.
And I can tell you locally, she'll go the map to fight for our elders or for any causes that they may have. I've been beside her and seen her do that. She's a tough little gal. And we really appreciate you, Aggie. Okay, I think, oh, the next presentation is Donna Whitlock. I think we're ready. Our agenda's been a little weird tonight, so. We like pictures.
A few words, but a lot of pictures. Perfect timing to follow our elders because I'm going to talk about our youngest single, our zero to five. First of all, I'd like to thank Barbara for inviting me here to speak tonight. My name's Donna Whitlock. I'm the prevention and intervention coordinator for the Galt Elementary School District. I have many roles in our small district. I look into, watch over the English learner program for our school district. I direct the after-school safety and education program for the school district. I oversee our preschool program and our primary reading program in our school district. So, tonight, I'm here to talk about another large part of my job and that's school readiness in our elementary school district. There we go. First and foremost, the school readiness program is 100% funded into our district by First Five Sacramento. Nineteen ninety-eight, voters passed the tobacco tax. All of the funds from the tobacco, the tobacco tax go to First Five California. And a portion of that comes down to First Five Sacramento. Important to note is those funds are all sent locally into our local neighboring districts and our towns. So, we have local control over the funds that are received from the tobacco tax. And I'm going to just go through quickly with pictures. You have a brochure from the school readiness program that has all of the information. So, I'll just go over it briefly so you get a better idea. Our mission is, our school district is committed to provide high-quality, comprehensive school readiness services to all families in Galt with children ages birth to five years old. And it's important to note all, regardless of your economic status. All families can take, have use of these services. And we'll go over a few of them. We have five goals. First is getting children ready for school. And that's in the area of health, family functioning, and child development. Second is the school's readiness for children. It's getting our school and our personnel prepared to receive those children in systems of care. Our preschool and school readiness program is at Fair Sight. We're not a closed school. We're a growing school and we are in the midst of transforming that into an early education center. Hundred and fifty community members answered our survey in our school district recently about taking continuing education classes for early childhood education to become preschool teachers. So, we know there's an interest. So, we're hoping that Fair Sight grows in that way also. And that's just some of our staff at Fair Sight. Health service is really important. You can see we have comprehensive screenings throughout the year. All of these screenings are free to children zero to five. Every year, we have a school readiness health fair. And at that health fair, we offer free screenings. We have, our local, other preschools also are involved. We have an array of community service, our police department, our library, our speech and language. Different community resources come and are available to families. Something that's really important, part of the First Five School Readiness Program is the early detection intervention of special needs. Important part of my job is the prevention specialist. And so, through First Five, parents who have concerns or just wondering, you know, if their child is developing and meeting their milestones, we have a psychologist and a speech therapist that's on board circumvent a lot of red tape for parents rather than going through the school district. They come straight to Fair Sight and they can get those questions answered. Family literacy is very important. And family literacy meaning, means involving the entire family in literacy development, the joy of reading, pre-reading skills. And so, we offer two just amazing programs, one in the fall and one in the spring that's open to all families in our school district. Parent support services, another really important part is that networking and in between families in the city of Galt. It's getting families together with their children for free, exciting, interesting events. And so, at Fair Sight, along with our other preschools, which I'll talk about our partners, NHDF, New Hope, City Tots, we have events that families can attend, like our family night in the fall. We have picnic on the green. We have family Fridays. We have movie nights. And it was incredible this year at our library we partnered with for Dia de los Niños, the Day of the Child. We had over five hundred children receive books and over three hundred families attended the Dia de los Niños event. Parenting education classes and this time of shrinking resources in our school district, it's just absolutely been just a lifesaver to have the school readiness funding come to our district because we can now offer the classes like the positive discipline, the nutrition classes, social emotional development classes to families. We're targeting zero to five, but we open these classes up to all families in our school district, you know, kinder through eighth grade also. Child development, something that's just, one of, actually, it's in our action plan for our school district is to expand our preschool in Galt. We have the goal of eventually serving all four-year-olds in preschool. And so, with First Five funding, we've able to add a preschool class at Galt. We also have a play group for parent and toddlers, three days a week. Parents with children zero to three can come with a preschool teacher and it's kind of a preschool readiness. On our campus, we also have Galt Up Play, which is another First Five-funded play group that offers also free play group to all members in the Galt community. Kinder transition, although there's a lot of preschool opportunity in Galt, over sixty percent of our children don't have that opportunity before they come to kindergarten. With First Five funding, we run a Jump Start Kinder Camp targeting children of little or no preschool. And it's a five-week program, run by preschool teachers. And it's targeting those preschool, social emotional skills that those kids will need when they go into kindergarten. And every child that attends the Jump Start Camp gets a free transition backpack filled with school materials. Systems of care, I was just really proud, and I know I forgot some of our partners. But although this is the first time that I've had the opportunity to address the city council, just, you know, you look at our community of Galt and how just they've come on board and they've really helped us with it from the beginning. I think Mary Lou was at our first meeting. She's on our school advisory meeting. But I think that you're really busy and that sometimes they conflict. But, you know, a lot of community members help plan this program. Our library is a wonderful partner. Sacramento County Office of Education, Wells Fargo Bank has donated over $3,000 to our English classes for our moms that have children zero to five. They have donated money for literacy, bright futures. It's been amazing, the Dairy Council. And then I'd like to also just again quickly, the preschools in Galt because our program doesn't just serve children, it serves childcare providers and preschools in the entire community. Looking down to the end, you see it's really comprehensive. EC and Kinder Collaborative, an important job. This is the schools getting ready for kids. It's connecting the kindergarten teachers with the private childcare providers and the other preschool teachers in Galt. And what they do is they meet on a quarterly basis and they talk about the things that you see on the screen there, just having better opportunity for children to make that transition from childcare preschool into kindergarten. And staff development, you know, at school district, that's what, that's the priority for us and that's where we excel. And so, school readiness is ask the school districts to provide that same staff development to the community. So, we offer staff development throughout the year to all providers and preschools in Galt. Become a school readiness advisory committee member, please. If you're ever, if you're interested, come see me at Fair Sight. And we just, we need the community, we need involvement to help grow and expand and improve. And are there any questions?
I have a comment. I was with you in the beginning of, starting off of writing this and getting it off the ground. And I really think you and your group ought to be commended because nobody knows better than I do how hard it is to write a grant. And the meetings that you guys had and, you know, your plan that you got together and everything. And then to get such a good grant and to be able to offer so many services, you worked really hard. And it's just amazing the fruition it came to. You did a great job.
The good news, in the midst of these budget cuts at the state level, First Five did suffer fifty percent one-time budget cut of current revenues. When they looked at the budget for First Five Sacramento, school readiness was left 100% intact at all of our Sac County school districts. And we are looking forward to another three-year plan after next year, so, thank you.
One of the things that, or one of the reasons that I asked Donna to come and speak, I'm on the First Five Advisory Committee. And I represent the Commission On Adult And Aging to that committee. One of the reasons is because today, more and more, you hear about grandparents raising their grandchildren for whatever reason. And so, to get on that advisory committee as a member of the Adult And Aging Commission was kind of strange. But by being on there, I was educated. And what I've learned, and that's why I think it was so important for Donna to come, is the child development that occurs between age zero and five is tremendous. And if you, if these children don't have the opportunity to even get ready for kindergarten, then it puts them behind from the very beginning. And in some cases, maybe they never catch up. So, looking at our community, I felt like it was important for the people in Galt to know that we have this for them and that it is so important for the future of our youth. And thank you, Donna, so much for coming. Okay, I think we have finished our presentation. Okay, I think we have finished our presentation. And at Councilman Shelton's request, we're going, and it makes perfectly good sense, we're going to take item number four on the consent calendar and put it down under city council office, which is my report on the student intern, so that we have it all together. So other than that item on the consent calendar, I would entertain a motion. Well, what? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, Liz.
That's okay. Do you want to, you need to do mine right now?
Go for it.
Actually, I pulled the minutes off the consent calendar. There was a change to the number that was approved for the youth committee. So it was just, actually, it was just a typographical error that was corrected. So I asked for your approval.
Of the minutes?
Of the minutes.
Okay. So I think what we are ready for is an approval of the consent calendar with the changes on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay. I was not gonna.
Councilman Shelton has seconded it. Local?
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers. Aye. Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay. We are now moving to scheduled matters, our nine regular calendar treasurer's office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. Tonight, I have two items on the agenda, and I'm going to combine them if I can. But first, I would like to talk what I think is the more important one, and that is about the investment policy that you have before you. By government code, an investment policy must be presented to, in a public meeting, to the governing body, in this case, the city council here. And in that policy, I want to, there's about seven or so points that I want to kind of make sure that we all understand. Point number one, if you're following me along, council members, on page one, right at the bottom of the page, says, "Under California Government Code, Section 53601, the city council is authorized to invest surplus monies specified in that code section. In accordance with California Government Code, Section 53607, this authority is delegated to the city treasurer for a one-year period. Subject to review, the city council may renew the delegation of authority under this code section each year." So mainly what it's saying is that you as city council members have the ultimate responsibility of, as far as investing surplus monies, and you are designating this to the city treasurer, and you do that for a one-year period of time. And that's, that's one of the main reasons why you have this investment policy in front of you. Item number two just restates the objectives that I've been always talking about, and that is safety first, liquidity second, yield third. Item point number three is that this policy specifies what brokers that the city treasurer would be dealing with. There are a total of four brokers, and they're on the last page, which is Robinson Capital Management, Payne Weber, First Tennessee Bank, and Guilford Securities. So that, that's what this policy does. Item number four, it also specifies what are suitable investments, in other words, allowed investments, which are, of course, US Treasury, your federal agency securities, CDs, demand deposits, which is just a checking account, banker's acceptances. We can invest in the local agency investment fund, the State of California Fund. It also states what are not allow, allowable investments. And those are, say, repurchase agreements or reverse repurchase agreements, any common stocks or corporate bonds. Lastly, we want a diversified portfolio, and we want to specify up to a certain percentage of how many of our idle funds, what can be placed in each type of an investment. So that also is stated in here. And lastly, that as a council member, you would want the treasurer to issue monthly reports, which I do, that are, that are brought before you as the council members, and so you can view them at any time. So that is what constitutes the investment policy, and it's important, of course, you know, it has to be done in a public meeting, but that's why it's in front of you tonight. Now, having said all that, I'm sorry, Liz, do I need to have them pass that first before I get on to my monthly treasurer's report?
I think you can give the monthly treasurer's report.
Just combine them both? Okay, great.
And then we can vote on them separately?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And so in the monthly treasurer's report that you have before you in the month of March, and I'm not going to say much about it, in the fact that we all know where interest rates are, for the month of March, the city, the city earned a weighted average of 1.03%. And I will simply tell you, as of the first three months of the fiscal year, the city earned $637,000 in interest. We have our money invested in, of course, we have a checking account at Farmers and Merchants Bank. We participate in the State of California Local Agency Investment Fund. We have a CD at Premier West Bank, and two separate CDs at Farmers and Merchants Bank, along with different or assorted government agencies, which are bonds that are from Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and the Federal Home Loan Bank. So I'll answer or entertain any questions that may have. Otherwise, I ask for your approval for both the treasurer's report as of the end of March and for the treasurer's, I'm sorry, and for the investment policy for the fiscal year coming up, 2011, 2012. Thank you.
Any questions? Everybody understand all of this?
The fiscal year starts July 1st, correct?
The fiscal year starts July 1st, yes. But this policy has to be in place prior, of course, right as of July 1st. I will also add one last thing. There are no changes from this past fiscal year to this fiscal year, the investment policy, other than the dates.
Do you want to read the first item that we'll be voting on or asking for us?
Okay. The first item is the treasurer's, treasurer's report for the period ending March 2011, and the motion would be to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
So I have a motion.
I move to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
Vice Mayor Powers has made the motion. Is there a second?
You were talking when I was.
Housewoman Singleton has seconded it? Seconded it?
Oh, Randy.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Would you like to read the next item?
The next item is the investment policy for the city of Galt fiscal year 2011, 2012, and the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving the investment policy for the city of Galt fiscal year 2010, 2011.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shelton. You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You did a good job.
That's mine, huh?
Thank you very much.
What is it? Do you want me to do this, or you can do this?
The next item on here is city council office with the student intern. And we are combining this with the consent item. So Paula, do you want to report on the consent part of it?
Good evening. The job description that I'm proposing tonight is an addition to a job description that we've had for a number of years. We created a student intern position in 2008, which really addressed college-level students. And in light of discussions that we've had recently, we thought it would be good to have, you know, to expand this and add a high school intern. And so before you tonight is a job description that adds to the student intern high school, and it just provides a little more clarity as far as what we need regarding that. It's a little bit different than a college-level intern. In addition, I want to add that I had made one change that I provided to council tonight regarding a driver's license. So if this is approved tonight, that that change would be included in the approval. We've also added the salary schedule for part-time employees so that the high school intern would be paid at the appropriate level. Do you have any questions?
Any questions at this point, or maybe after I finish five reports, you may have questions on either item? I think before we call for a vote, it makes sense that I should discuss my reason for proposing having an intern. As you know, we have a Galt City Council Youth Committee, and this year it has been exceptional. At the previous council meeting, we had representatives from this youth council make a, a presentation of their budget, which was requested by the council that they do so. And they put together a program for the next year. They did a detailed budget and made a PowerPoint presentation that was exceptional. And it occurred to me that they could be a great asset to the council in other ways. I can tell you right now, they can do more with that computer than I can ever do. So that was impressive. But the other part is, as a member of the city council, this intern, well, she's not an intern yet, but this person has been working from the outside, been involved in community service, but never has been a part of the inside working of the city council, which was one of the goals in establishing a youth council in the first place. So I thought this was an opportunity to invite one of our, our members of our youth council to become an intern. And some of the things that I felt like she, in this case, she could do, is be a conduit between the high school and the city of Galt. For example, there are many activities that go on in the high school that we could support. I was there this morning, and they were talking about recycling. And I'm thinking, you know, that's a great idea that these youth are doing at Galt High School, but how much greater would it be if we had known they were going to do this and we could jump, jump on the bandwagon with them? So that's one of the goals that I hope we could accomplish. And it's a two-way thing. I want to support the schools, the youth as much as possible, in this case, the high school. And these young people have come to our aid, whether it's with the Winter Bird Festival. I don't know that we could accomplish the events that we have without them. So it's a two-way street. They serve us, it's time we, in my estimation, try to support what they're trying to do. In addition to that, the advantage this would be on their application to a college would be tremendous, to show that they had been an intern for the city of Galt. And in discussing it with Paula, we, we even talked about the fact of her, this person getting a stipend. And it's interesting because I was talking to someone from the newspaper, Lowdi News. They were interested in what we were trying to do, and they asked if we were going to give, pay her for any, pay her anything, because they have interns at Lowdi News, and they don't pay them anything. And she said it's a real downer for them, and they soon kind of lose interest because they, they don't feel like they're really important. So that's why we evolved to include paying a stipend of like eight dollars an hour. It also involves them in the whole system of being employed, which I think is educational as well. There are many things that they can do, and part of the other reason I thought this would be a good idea, we have cut back on staff. We now only have a city clerk and her assistant. We are down one person. And I can tell you that as the mayor, I'm calling on both of them quite a bit, and I think this intern can help relieve some of those, those calls that I placed on them. I would be happy, I think I've given you a lot of my reasons, but I would be happy if you had any specific questions to entertain them now.
I do. I think what you're trying to do, I applaud you, but I do have some questions on it. As one of the gentlemen that came up and spoke at the podium earlier, I too had the opportunity to be an intern at a police department. And it was, I was a college student, but I got college credit. And when my allotted time was over, if I needed to stay or wanted to stay on and get involved with investigation or dispatch or patrol, I became a volunteer and arrived along. So I don't know, I'm just having some concerns of an internship where we're paying an individual. And I think it looks great. I mean, it's the end result, I got my college credit. You know, I got a letter of recommendation, you know, if I were to become a police officer, and that was very rewarding. That, and you had mentioned, Mayor, about, you know, the times are tough, and we're doing some such things. To me, you know, volunteers in America, we can't do without them. I mean, look at the firefighters and other individuals that are all over the world that volunteer their time. So I'm more prone to moving this along, you know, without a salary. But one of the things, I think what maybe we should consider too, and I've spoke with our attorney, so I have to be a little careful because it's not agendized. But instead of moving money, you know, the way we're doing this, I believe more appropriately is that one time when I was in council before, we had description, discretionary.
Discretionary.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I knew once I said it wrong the first time, I was gonna mess that. And I don't mean, you know, three, $5,000, but I think what we have in a cap of council members to go to annual conferences and training, and for us, Liz, I believe it's like $3,000 for council members.
$3,000 for council.
And I think something that we should consider is taking, and I'll just throw something out there, and I would like, and I'll bring this back during the budget, because I think that's when we should be, and our budget hearing is May 24th, correct? Look it, Jason for that. But I believe that that money, if that's the decision we would go with, is take, you know, 500, 700, 1,000. And then that funding could be used for special projects as what you're trying to do, assisting with the bird watch. Council members, I mean, you, you know, we're all kind of pulling ourselves together and working on, maybe we need equipment, maybe we need time. I think if we would do that on special projects, to me, that makes more sense. I think that's probably about all I could say on that because it's not agendized, but that's my feelings on that. I mean, what you're doing and what you want to do is kind of like, I guess, well, where do we, where do we stop? Because Mayor, and you're asking for an intern, and then what happens if I come back in a month or two, and then I feel like I need one? So if we have that special funding, that could be used for that.
I would, I didn't clarify this. I am proposing, the mayor has allocated $5,000 for travel money, and I have proposed to take $1,000 of my travel money and put it in an account for this intern. I think it's important to travel and go to these conferences. I've been to many of them, and I can, will continue to go to some of them. But out of the $5,000 that is allocated for the mayor, I think this $1,000 is going to be very beneficial. Now, I don't disagree with you that it would be nice to have discretionary money. We've had it in the past, and it was taken away. So I don't have that to look forward to. And I'm thinking this is, this will suffice for at this point. And if you want to change that in the future, to look at setting up discretionary money, I think that would be great. But we're not to that point right now. We don't have that set up. So this would facilitate- So this would facilitate this young person getting, getting something. And as you know, there aren't many jobs available for teenagers in Galt. And I propose using her maybe two days a week, depending on her, her work schedule. And I'm changing my office hours. They have been from one to three, but she will be able to come after school. So I'm changing my office hours to coincide with her being able to work with me. So she will be under supervision all, at all times. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Go for it.
And I'm just going to focus on what is going on today and what you want, and not to discredit anybody, anywhere, anytime, anyplace before. And as you said, after you go to a lot of these with your traveling, it gets to be where you don't need to go to as many. And you do have that fund, and although it isn't discretionary fund, it kind of is, but it's just sort of for travel, but we could change it to use it for something else. And you, we are minus an employee in the city clerk's office, but also you're there a lot. And I think you're there a lot, you know, because you have the wherewithal to be there. You're retired, and you're in the office a lot, and you're working, doing a lot. So, you know, don't mean it offensively, but you are there working a lot, and you've got a lot of irons in the fire. And so I feel that if, you feel that you would like to do this with the youth, that that's your right to change some of that money around. So that's where I'm at on it.
Thank you.
I have something I'd like to say.
Okay, Councilman Singleton?
Part of the reason we're here and we're in office, and this is just part of our job, is to help lead this community. And I think our kids are part of our community, for last time I checked. And I think this is a good investment in our kids. I agree with Councilmember Shelton also to a degree. So I'm wondering, is there a way that we can pass this with Mayor Payne's putting her thousand and two hundred seventy-three in travel money? And then at our budget meeting next week, we can discuss putting some kind of budget or cap on this and bringing it back?
For discretionary funds?
Yeah, discretionary funding.
Talking about taking, if each council member has three thousand dollars, taking a certain amount of that and setting it aside as a discretionary account, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, we can talk about that at the budget hearing.
I mean, can we still, I'm asking if it would, because I think it's a good investment. You know, when we were young, I was, I was, when I was young, I would be upset because people wouldn't give me the opportunity to show them I can do the job. And here we are, opening up something to show our young, that they can, show us what they can do and get the experience and the credibility for what they're doing. So I do believe this is a good investment in our, in our kids.
Yeah, what's on the agenda tonight is to move a thousand dollars from the mayor's travel money into this, this fund for the student intern. And that's what you'd be going on tonight. If you want to explore further about moving a portion of each individual council member's travel money into a separate account, that we could discuss on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, then, okay.
And that's what I'd said at my.
Okay. I didn't mean to reiterate, but I just wanted to make sure I had it clear and that people know that. I do believe it's a good investment. I think it's a good opportunity for any students. And it's not only going to be, I imagine it's going to be an ongoing thing, or it'll be every year, it'll be a different intern or something to that effect, correct?
Well, we're gonna, I discussed this with our city manager, we're going to see how this works.
Okay.
And then, you know, it's, it would be up to you. If you wanted to try to pursue the intern program, that would be fine. But we're gonna test it, see how it works, if there's any problems. I know we have a lot of youth involved in like our cadet program, and they do a great job. I think this will be.
I think it's well worth it, because for at least, at least try, give a shot. So you'd have my backing up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilman Cruz?
No.
Oh, you were pointing to Councilman Shelton.
So, Mayor, your term would be, if this is approved, it would go from, I'm looking at two budget cycles, right? So from what year to what year?
We're at mid-budget now, so we, part of it was like two hundred and something dollars, I believe, to finish out.
Two seventy-three.
Liz, you want to clarify that?
Yes, to fund the position, it's two hundred and seventy-three dollars for, until the end of the fiscal year, till June thirty, two thousand and eleven. And for the new fiscal year, a thousand dollars.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just was trying to, in my mind, I was trying to figure out, you're talking about from June to the following June or something?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other discussion on this, Councilman Cruz? Are you, no questions, comments?
The biggest thing I was interested in was fiscal, fiscal impact, and it's not affecting the budget. It's just what the money's around, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Well, is there a motion then on the matter? Do you want to read?
Yes, the first, the first item is.
Hold it. Okay.
The first item is student intern job description and salary range. With the recommended action, adopt a resolution approving the proposed changes to the student intern job description. And number two, approve the proposed part-time salary schedule, adding the student intern high school. That's your first action.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Hi.
Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Shelton?
No, no.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Hi. Motion has passed, now do you want to read the next?
The next item is the student intern for the mayor. With the recommended action, review the staff report and this appropriate, reallocate funds from the city council travel fund to the part-time line item for the hiring of a student intern for the mayor through June thirty, two thousand and twelve. And again, the, the amount will be two hundred and seventy-three dollars this fiscal year, a thousand dollars next fiscal year.
Can I ask for a point on there? Instead of saying the city council travel fund, could you put mayor travel fund? Is that the way?
I can't, it is one.
Was it one fund altogether?
It is one fund.
One fund.
By the account number, it's one.
And in our office, we kind of keep track of who's spending what, and it's, we keep track of it. This council hasn't gotten close to spending their, their money. When, when people start getting close, we actually start sending out notices that you spent this much, and so.
Where are we? I'm lost.
I, um, we're, this is for the, to reallocate funds for the student intern.
So we now are ready for a motion to that effect? Is there a motion?
I'll also make that motion.
Thank you.
To approve.
Is there a second?
All second.
The move is seconded, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Hi.
Councilmember Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Shelton?
No.
Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Payne?
Hi. And I just want to say, I've seen this guy work, and she's got a lot of potential. I think we're going to get our eight dollars an hour worth out of this young lady. So thank you so much for approving that. Okay, quickly, we're going to move to the next item, which is an update on the, where is it? I've lost. The strategic plan. And I'm going to go through that. We've accomplished quite a bit, so I'm just going to tell you what we've accomplished, because that makes me feel good to do that. Okay. Okay, under, provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. This is part of our three-year goal, for those of you that haven't been here before. We set these goals, and we are reviewing them every six months, three months?
No, we provide a report to the community every month.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But then we change our goals.
We as a council and staff get together every six months and reset the goals, yeah.
Okay, so let me tell you what we've done, folks. Our Public Works Director has completed his item, which was the forward recommendations for contract awards for the Golden Heights Well and Water Treatment Plant to the city for action. He's completed that. He's completed to present to the council the results of the unmet transit needs hearing. And we are following up on that, too. He's presented it, and hopefully, we're going to get some good action out of that item. Parks and Recs Director with input from the Youth Commission and the Parks and Recs Commission. Again, this is what I spoke of earlier, where the youth put together a budget for the whole year, did a PowerPoint, presented it. That was completed not only to the council, but also to Parks and Recs, and it was supported a hundred percent. What else have we done? What else have we completed? You had some items, city manager, you want to talk about those that you've completed?
I think most of those were reported at the last meeting. I think some of the big ones that were completed were under increased community engagement. Those were yours, Mayor.
Oh, so you're throwing it back at me already?
Right.
Okay. As was mentioned earlier, we had our, it wasn't a town hall meeting, because we wanted it to be real positive, so we called it a community gathering. And I have to say, I was so impressed with the cooperation of these government bodies, I'll put it that way, these elected officials, including CSD, who's here at nearly every one of our council meetings, that came together as a body, the high school school board, elementary school board, city council, all of our appointed commissions, committees. They were there to hear from the people on a one-on-one basis. Some people are intimidated to come up to a podium and ask questions or talk. This was an opportunity for them to just walk up to someone and say, you know, I really don't understand what you're doing, and just have an informal conversation. In addition to that, one of the things I was really proud of, it showed the community's devotion and dedication to their youth. The youth have put together a youth master plan, a youth master plan. I mean, we have general plans, but when you talk about planning for your youth, for their future, that's pretty important. And that was presented at that meeting, too. And again, I think it shows where our priorities are with our people, and I think we got, we have our priorities in the right place. So that has been completed. What else have I done? The business fair, thank you. We held a very successful business fair to introduce the farmer's market at Community Park. Part of our goal is to break down that barrier called Highway ninety-nine that keeps half of the people on one side of the freeway, and the other half on the other side of the freeway, and never between meet. So we decided to take our farmer's market over to Community Park, along with a lot of our vendors from both sides of the freeway, to let people know what we do have to offer, and I thought it was very successful. Am I done?
That's good.
Okay.
I apologize, normally we have a PowerPoint, and I failed to get that ready for tonight. So next meeting, or next month, we'll have that up on the, on the screen.
It's a good test for me to wing it once in a while. That was, that was my test. Okay, that's the report update on that. Where are we now? I'm totally lost. Would you please?
We're at the city attorney's office, report of ad hoc committee on commissions and committees. An ordinance of the city of Galt is repealing chapter two point two eight, adopting chapter two point seven oh of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the planning commission, and an ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt adopting chapter two point seven five of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Parks and Recreation Commission. I think I win the award for the largest, longest title of the evening.
Just like a lawyer.
I consider it a challenge. The council may remember, back in December of two thousand and ten, the city council formed an ad hoc committee comprised of Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Shelton to look at a variety of issues. First was to review the bylaws of the city's standing boards and commissions, to look at the current function of the Housing Advisory and Appeal Board, and decide whether or not that needed to continue to exist. Also to take a look at alternates, and whether or not there was a need for alternates on various commissions. And finally, to evaluate whether a person should be able to serve on two commissions or committees. So we're here tonight to provide a report back to the council on these various tasks. And starting with the bylaws of the boards and commissions, one of the first things that we, we started to do as we undertook this mission was to try to collect the various rules and regulations that govern these nine bodies. And that was actually a pretty hard task. And what that, what that brought to our attention was that most of these bodies had been formed by a variety of different methods. Some of them you can find in the municipal code, others were adopted by resolution. One was in a paragraph in a specific plan. And a few other bodies had just been done by minute motion at a city council meeting. And so because of the way in which those different bodies were formed, there was not a lot of consistency in the rules that governed these, these bodies. So what the ad hoc committee decided that is that a fix would be to come up with a consistent method of forming these commissions and committees by way of an adopted ordinance. And that that would most likely cure the problems with the, that we find in the different, differences between the bylaws. So what we've done is to prepare a, an ordinance along those lines for both the planning commission and the Parks and Recs Commission. And if this, this approach works for the city council, then what the task will be in the future is to take the remaining bodies and to adopt ordinances similar to the ones that we prepared for the planning commission and Parks and Recs Commission, and put those ordinances all in one place in the municipal code. So in the future, if you have questions about the standing commissions and committees for the city of Galt, they're all found in, in one location. So what I'd like to do now is just briefly go through the, one of the ordinances that we prepared. I'm going to do the one that relates to the planning commission. And the, the setup of both of these ordinances is very similar. So what we've done is we started with the purpose and functions of the particular commission. So each body would have a unique purpose and function set out at the, at the start. The next part is, we've established what the qualifications are to serve on, on the commission. And as it relates to the, the planning commission, what we provided is that in order to be eligible to hold office on a commission, you need to be a resident and registered voter of the city. Now, there was a bit of debate on this particular item, first at the committee, at the ad hoc committee level, and then when I brought these ordinances to the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission. And so what evolved was an exception to that rule, that everybody needed to be a resident and registered voter of the city. And we added part C under qualifications, which provides that up to two members of the commission may be, may reside outside the city limits, but within the city's sphere of influence boundaries. Both the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission recommended a change to item C. They felt that in lieu of the limit being the city's sphere of influence boundaries, that it would be the Galt High School District boundaries. So that's one recommendation that comes from both, both of those commissions. The next part of the ordinance provides that each, the commission would consist of five members. So both the planning commission and the Parks and Recs Commission, neither would have alternates under these ordinances. Each council member appoints one member. And then after appointed, the body as a whole, all members would serve at the pleasure of the city council. The next few items, let's see, rules and regulations. So what we provided is that each commission would have the authority to adopt their own bylaws, their own rules and regulations, that would have to be consistent with the ordinance. But before it would become effective, those rules and regulations would come before the city council for approval. So you'd have an opportunity to see what rules and regulations were going to be put into effect before they actually took effect. The next item on meetings, it has a provision that says each commission would endeavor to meet at least once a month. We've had a situation in the past where if there wasn't any business going on, some of these commissions have met pretty infrequently, in some cases, every, you know, three to four months. And what, what happens under that scenario is people that want to have, to do business with these various bodies don't have an opportunity to come and address them. And so while it's not a mandate that they meet monthly, what this ordinance would encourage is that folks, that each commission try to meet on a regular, monthly basis. There's a provision relating to absences, that if we have somebody that's a member, and they have three consecutive unexcused absences, that, that information will be brought forward to the mayor. forward to the mayor, and the council could decide whether or not some action was appropriate. And finally, we've added a provision for an annual report. And what goes into that annual report is left pretty loose. But it's just to provide an opportunity for each commission, once a year, to come before the city council and give you a brief update as to what they've been doing for the last year, what they recommend they need to do for the next year, and to get any kind of input from the council that you desire to provide. So, that's an overview of the ordinances that are presented for your consideration tonight. Briefly moving on to the other three items that the ad hoc committee had to look at, the second item was the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board, which was established by the city council back in 1998. And the purpose of this body is to serve as a review panel in the event that somebody has an issue with a decision made by the building officials in the city. Well, this body's never met since 1998. And so, what the recommendation is, is that we disband this body, and the city already has a process in place where if somebody has a dispute with, say, a code enforcement officer, then that item can be brought before a hearing officer, and then the hearing officer's decision comes back to the city council for a decision. I think that that would be an appropriate mechanism, especially because of the fact that it does not... It hasn't been used in the last 12 years. As it relates to alternates, I think I've already addressed that. As it relates to the two ordinances before you, the recommendation is not to have alternates, to have just a five-member body. And if we have issues with attendance, then the council can address it at that time. Last item relates to whether or not people in the community should be able to serve on more than one body. And at first, it was... It looked like the ad hoc committee was going to bring forward a recommendation to have a firm policy that folks only serve on one body in order to encourage a wider group of people within the community to get involved in these... On these various commissions. But since all the appointments come back to the council anyway, the end result was a recommendation that while the ad hoc committee recognizes there may... While the ad hoc committee feels that generally, the rule should be that we try to look for a wide group of folks to serve on committees, that sometimes there's a reason to deviate from that, and that it's appropriate for somebody to serve on more than one body. So, therefore, it's recommended that this should be kind of an informal city council guideline and not an absolute rule. So, that's the work product of the committee. I don't know if Councilmember Cruz or Councilmember Shelton want to add anything at this point in time. If not, then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Would you explain for any of those individuals that are alternates, you know, when their term would end?
Well, the only change that we were making tonight would relate to the Planning Commission, and there are currently no alternates on that body right now. So, we don't... We're not affecting anybody.
Okay.
As it relates to the rule relating to service outside the city jurisdiction, if that rule is changed tonight, either to provide that all members be residents or registered voters of the city, or that the limits for two members be within the sphere, there is a provision in both ordinances that says it does not affect the qualifications of any sitting member. So, these ordinances are drafted not... So, that we do not remove anybody who is currently serving on a commission.
Questions, comments from council?
I have a comment. And good work, and I know you worked on it hard. But I personally would like to go with the recommendations of the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission to change the wording... Can I do this here? Okay. I don't know if I could enough. To change the wording that says the city's sphere of influence boundaries to be the boundaries of the Galt High School District. And a couple of reasons I have for this is when we added the sphere, we didn't really add any people or anything. We just... The sphere is pretty much blank land. And we do have some people on some of the committees, you know, who do pay money, Parks and Rec essentially, their children pay the City of Galt to be on some of the sports programs. And so, I think it's important that some of those people have some input on those committees. So, I have that recommendation, and I don't know if anyone has any comments on that, but I would like to go with what the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended.
There was one difference between the two commissions, and one of the commissions suggested that it be within the Galt High School District boundaries but within Sacramento County, because I understand part of the district boundaries go into San Joaquin.
San Joaquin, yeah.
So, is it your preference to have the restriction to just Sacramento County or to the entirety of the High School District boundary?
Well, the two different commissions ask for different things. Personally, I think I'd go within Sacramento County.
That was the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Right. Because I don't really see that... I'm not sure about the sports program in San Joaquin County. I don't know.
I think what...
That would just be a capel, right? Or no?
I'm sorry?
A capel. You know, it's not in the Sacramento County, is what you're saying?
Correct. And you can have a different standard for each commission if you felt it was appropriate. It doesn't need to be precisely the same. I don't know how far into San Joaquin County the High School District boundaries act.
The GOCS Act, I think.
Okay.
And I only know that because that's what my organization uses as the boundaries for the services that we give. So, I guess, now that I'm rethinking it, I would leave it the way the Planning Commission wanted it and the way the Parks and Recreation wanted it. It's two different... There's a little bit of different wording, but that's the way I would go.
Any other comments? Well, then I'll make my comment quickly. I agree. I think it would be a shame to lose some of the talent that we have that... From people that live on the other side of the city limits. And, you know, when you think about it, you have to look at the community. And Galt is an agricultural community that was actually formed by the people that lived outside the... What we call the city limits of our community. And I know that we don't hesitate to ask them to volunteer and help, whether it's fundraising or anything. And a point I would make is that whomever is selected on these, they are selected by elected officials. So, you do have the representation of the people because you have been elected by the people to select these people. Hope that makes sense. But a final point, I find it interesting that the father of Galt, the person that is given credit for founding, finding Galt, is John McFarland. And if any of you have been to his home, it's way out in the country. So, I think that's a pretty good example of what people that live outside the city limits can contribute. I know with the Grange, you know, they're a good blend of the outside the city limits and the inside the city limits. And I would just hate to see our community lose that talent for this community. That's my comment. So, if there aren't any other comments, I think we're ready to entertain a motion. Is that what you were trying to do?
And I forgot everything we learned at our little meeting.
Well, actually, this is a pretty complicated one. And so, what I would propose is that I give you a proposed motions, and I think we really need to break this one down into three separate motions because we've got two separate ordinances. The first motion I'd recommend is to introduce an ordinance repealing Chapter 2.28 and adopting Chapter 2.70 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Planning Commission. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular meeting of the city council with the ordinance amended as follows in Section 2.70040(c). Change the language to read as follows. Notwithstanding the provisions of Paragraph B above, up to two members of the commission may reside outside of the city limits but within the boundaries of the Galt High School District within Sacramento County.
And that's for the Planning Commission?
That's the Planning Commission.
Does everybody understand that action?
I do. So, one of the members wanted to say, "I so move."
I so move.
We have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion on that? If not?
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. City Attorney.
Okay. The next motion would be to introduce an ordinance adopting Chapter 2.75 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Parks and Rec Commission. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular city council meeting with the following amendment to Section 2.75.050... 2.75040(c), which would read as follows. Notwithstanding the provisions of Paragraph B above, up to two members of the commission may reside outside the city limits but within the boundaries of the Galt High School District.
Is there a motion on that?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Singleton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Cruz. We have a first and a second. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye. Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion is passed.
Okay. And the last motion would be to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance abolishing the Housing Advisory Appeal Board and providing that the appeals of the decisions of the city building official be handled in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 21.03 of the Galt Municipal Code. Further, direct the city attorney to prepare ordinances establishing the purpose, functions, rules, and regulations for the remaining standing commissions and committees for consideration by the city council.
I so make the motion.
Thank you so much. Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. And I'm sorry, was there any other discussion on that? We just kind of moved along. Okay, good. That motion is passed.
Thank you.
We're done with that item? Okay. Then we will now go to Culture and Recreation Department. Who was going to make it?
Do you have any speaker sheets on?
I don't have any speaker sheets. I'm sorry. I didn't see you or anything. Did I miss a speaker?
We usually ask for public comment at the beginning on any item on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd recommend, since you just introduced these ordinances, they're not up for... They have not been adopted yet. They're going to come back for actual action. If the council desires, you could take that testimony at this point in time, or if the speaker wanted to wait till the next meeting, there would certainly be an opportunity then. So, whatever your pleasure.
If anyone in the audience would like to speak now, they can, or at the next hearing
It's not adopted, though. If you'd like to come up, because it has to come back at the next meeting to be adopted. It's just been introduced.
We're back at Culture and Recreation.
Fourth of July, 2011 celebration event.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff was asked to work with the council to develop an inexpensive, family-oriented, one-day celebration for the citizens of Galt to coincide with the city's July fireworks display. In that meeting, several ideas were brought forth and were listed in the summary activity cost list. Such activities were fireworks in the pool, families would be able to watch fireworks while enjoying our aquatic center, skateboard contest for teens under 18, a teen dance for the ages 13 to 17, an exhibition hall at our Shabola Center, entertainment that would include a live band, a DJ, any type of entertainment that the committee deemed appropriate, a local... Shop local bingle, a kid's zone, softball tournament, homerun derby, volleyball tournament, and horseshoe tournament at a cost of $13,630. The cost of the $13,630 would be offset by charging a small fee for some of the activities and by sponsorship for the event. We are asking that the council appoint two members to work with staff to make the decisions in regarding to entertainment and cost for other events. We're all asked... We're asking also the council approve the concept of which I've just laid out and authorize the city manager to set fees for activities, provide direction to staff regarding the sale of alcohol during the event, and appropriate the $13,630 to the Parks and Rec budget account.
I'm sure he would answer any questions if there are any questions from council members or comments.
I have a comment. I want to thank you very much, Armando, for getting this together so quick. You did a great job, and there's a lot of fun things that can happen on that day at very nominal price for the citizens of Galt. And it looks like there's going to be quite a few fun things for everyone to come out and enjoy.
Any other comments? Then, City Clerk, would you read the first action we covered?
The first action is to appoint two... Appoint two city council members to work with staff in organizing the Galt Fourth of July celebration for 2011.
I would like to volunteer for that.
I was just going to ask if someone would like to volunteer, and Councilmember Singleton just jumped right in, right off of that.
I'll volunteer, too.
And we have another volunteer.
Okay. Approve and concept the attached activities and events. I'm going to read the rest of these.
Sure.
Because we can, I think, do the rest all together. Approve and concept the attached activities and events. Authorize the appointed city council members to make decisions regarding local nonprofit participation, entertainment, and activities for the event. Provide directions to staff regarding the sale of alcohol. We should probably stop there. That one should be taken away.
Do the alcohol one now? Is there any discussion on that? Or is there a motion on that item? It's been...
There's no recommendation here. One of the questions is, does the council want to allow a nonprofit or an organization to sell alcohol at the event?
I would like to entertain that thought of being able to do that, yes.
Me, too. And with the provision that we close it, the... Is this where we put the parameters in? Where we close it at eight o'clock, as has been requested by city staff before, close it at eight o'clock, and that gives time for everyone to get ready and settle down for the fireworks. So, that's my part of the recommendation.
That's a good recommendation. I would agree.
That a motion?
Okay. I move to that we allow a nonprofit to sell alcohol at the event. If more than one nonprofit applies for it, that we do a pull-out-of-a-hat or raffle. Whatever, pull-out-of-a-hat or...
Lottery.
Lottery, thank you. And that it stops at eight o'clock. And I think maybe that's it.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I just got right in. Keep going. Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Okay.
I think it stopped.
It's ours. Okay, you want to continue reading the remainder of those items?
Okay. Um, authorize the city manager to set fees for the event activities. Authorize the city council to seek sponsorship for the celebration event to help defray costs and appropriate thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars to the applicable Parks and Recreation Budget Accounts for the event with offsetting revenues.
Uh, I'd ask the city attorney if there's any of those that we need to take separately or if we can do them all in one motion.
You can do them all at once.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, please.
Councilwoman Singleton has moved the recommendation. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Cruz has seconded. For the roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion has passed unanimously. Next item, Public Works Department.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. This resolution which we are requesting the council to approve is to award a bid for streetlight retrofit project. Basically, what it is, is that we are recommending to change our existing lights with, uh, new technology, what is known as LED, that's, uh, light emission diode lights. This is the new technology which everybody is switching to. The advantage of this new light says it results into substantial savings as well as better contrast, better availability of light. We will go over a small presentation to show you the little detail, and then we will be asking for a recommend, uh, recommended motion. Go ahead, go to the next one. City staff submitted a grant application for the proposed lighting, to retrofit the lighting, uh, existing lighting with the new, uh, energy-efficient lighting back in 2010. California Energy Commission approved the grant in a, in the amount of one hundred thirty three thousand dollars, seven hundred thirty-six dollars. Subsequently, there is an agreement which was city and California Energy Commission entered into agreement to utilize this funding. This project was advertised for bids, we received five proposals, and lowest responsible bidder is going to be, or we are recommending is, uh, Republican ITS, a reputed contractor. This particular light, the scope of work includes replacement of one hundred fifty-six lights. As I stated before, we were able to obtain the funding, grant funding, in the tune of one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars from California Energy Commission, as well as city council authorized additional community development block grant funds in the tune of fifty-five thousand dollars to fully fund this project. Uh, the next slide. So what is the difference? What are we trying to do? There are two types of lights. Right now, most of our lights, almost all of our lights except downtown, uh, we have high-pressure sodium lights. So what that is, you see those lights, basically, this is the standard which is used by all city and county agencies. That light, you know, give you an amber-yellow light, which is very high, it's, you know, it has a lot of shine on it. But the new lighting we are proposing is LED lights. These lights emit white lights rather than yellow light. It does meet the minimum required, what we call put candles, to provide enough light on the floor, and then in addition to that, the way these new lights are designed, the spread ratio or the uniformity ratio, when the light comes down, you see the more illumination close to the lighter fixture. However, when you move away from this, it fades away. This new technology, it does not fade away at the same rate. Basically, even if you are far away from the light, it will have more light on the street. So that's the fundamental difference between these two types of lights. Additionally, the new lights take one-third of the energy what the older lights used to take. So that will result into the saving in terms of energy consumption. Not only that, the new lights last longer. The life of LED lights is two to three times over the life of existing sodium vapor. All the agencies, public agencies are exploring that. Larger agencies like San Francisco and some cities in the Bay Area, Sacramento, they have installed light. SMUD, our Sacramento Municipal Utility District, is promoting this program, because in the long run, it will result into substantial saving, not only as energy-wise, conserving energy, but at the same time in operations and maintenance costs also. Go to the next slide, please. So, for us, looking at our one hundred fifty-six lights, if we replace these lights, we are anticipating annual savings. It does not sound a big number, but still it adds up about forty-six hundred dollars in operations costs just by replacing these one hundred and fifty-six lights. Eventually, if this plan is successful, if we replace all our lights, we may be one-third of the operations cost, somewhere over forty thousand annually. With these lights, we will have a better lights, better illumination, at less cost. So that's, you know, the essence of this, switching the program here. Next slide, next slide, please. So these are the lights, we don't have the light off now. You see these amber lights on this yellow amber lights? These are old lights, and these are the new lights. You can see the difference in shine there, that this light, the LED lights, not only they are a little bit more pleasant, but the spread ratio is more, so you will see more illumination as you go far away from the lights. So that's the difference. We have a sample lights which, uh, could you turn that on? We have a sample light, how it looks like. It has a small bulbs, like we have a Christmas light, so it has about sixty, eighty, hundred, individual small diodes, what we call LEDs. It's not one lamp. The new lamp creates a lot of, you see the shine here, just see shining it. This is the, going to be a fixture which will be installed on our new lights.
Wow.
So just turn it toward the wall.
I don't want to find.
No, just look toward the wall. Yeah, this is how it, look at this, how it spreads on the sides. Okay, thank you. So, we received five bids. Like I said before, this project is fully funded by the Community Development Block Grant and California Energy Commission Grant Programs. So, once the council approves this award this evening, so, it will take approximately four months to complete this, and these lights will be spread throughout the city at various locations. One of the condition of the grant is that it should benefit the community at large. So there will be lights at the different locations, the street lights had, state locations have been selected, and that's part of the package. That's included here. So with that, uh, mayor, uh, staff is recommending approval of resolution awarding contracts to Republic ITS in the amount of one hundred eighty-three, one hundred eighty, eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety dollars. In addition to that, although the project is fully funded, we are also requesting fifteen thousand dollars as contingency, just in case we need to use it, hopefully we don't need to use it, but just in case, uh, a fifteen thousand dollar contingency set aside from Measure A, this is new Measure A Fund Twenty-Nine, uh, set-aside money for this project. And with that, uh, I conclude my staff report, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Questions down there?
As far as the lighting fixtures themselves, what do we have in the way of, uh, for lack of a better way of putting it, how vandal-proof are they?
Yeah, this is, you know, these lights, you know, are similar lights like any other lights, you know, there is no difference in as far as the vandalism goes. Of course, you will have more lighting, the potential is less that there will be vandalism because it will be lighted more. Let's show the next slide on this one. You see, this, this is the two lamps we are looking at, you know, that's the older one, this is the newer one. It uses less energy, more lighting, and more illumination, so it will help us with the vandalism instead of, uh, you know, uh, other way around.
But my point was, one BB in your low, your high-powered sodium is done.
Yeah.
Okay, is the same thing true of the LED?
Yeah.
That's a good point, uh, Councilman Cruz brought it up. Like I mentioned, these are individual LEDs. So once, if one LED goes out, that doesn't mean the whole light is going off.
Okay, so.
So in fact, it would be a better option for us.
So they're in parallel circuit, not a series circuit?
That is correct. They're in parallel circuits. It's not like Christmas lights, you know, if one lamp goes out, the whole light goes on. It will still stay on, but only that particular lamp which will, let's say it got shot or get hit or fused, rest will be still working.
And the lifetime on the head and the warranty, what are they?
Yeah, on this one, the life of this LED is three times. Like typical other lights, if you replace it one year, the life, uh, long warranty on this one is three times than the original one, uh, at the sodium vapor lamp.
Okay, but time-wise, ten years, five years, two months?
No, typically on this one, they give you a standard warranty of one year. But however, the lights always last long.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, on, on this. Do you want to read the recommenda, recommended action?
Okay. Let me get, sorry. Okay, adopt a resolution approving the filing of the California Environmental Quality Act, notice of exemption. Number two, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Republic ITS an amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred ninety dollars for the streetlight retrofit project. The next item, appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from Fund Twenty-Nine, new Measure A, and also authorize the city manager to accept revenue from a one-time SMUD rebate incentive estimate to be three thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars, and authorize the director of Public Works to accept the improvements and issue the notice of completion upon completion of the work.
Is there a motion? Can we do this all in one? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, and then we accept the recommendations as read.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a, a motion and a second? Are there, is there any other discussion on this? Nope, okay, then I'll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously. Next item is, next item is communication, right?
Yes.
Okay, I do have a letter that I wanted to share with you. This is from the Honorable Doris Matsui, uh, and it goes as, as this. Today, Congresswoman Doris Matsui issued the below statement following the Environmental Protection Agency's proposal to determine that the area has attained the one-hour ozone standard, thereby eliminating the requirement of section one eighty-five fees to be imposed on larger businesses in the Sacramento region. The approval of this request will save Sacramento businesses roughly six million dollars in section one eighty-five fees, as the EPA has determined that an important air quality standard has been met. It should make us so happy that we're going to get to keep some of our money and not give it to, uh, somebody else. Is there any other written communication from anybody? Okay, um, we will now adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Board members, Powers. Here, Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Powers.
Payne, here. Uh, public comments?
Do we have any speaker sheets?
There are no speaker sheets? Anyone wish to speak to this item? I thought we had no speaker sheets.
Rick Walters, I live in the city of Galt. Um, I'm not for this redevelopment of the Center Horn and the seventeen million dollars. So I want my name off the list. I want to publicly state that I want my name off the list, to use my tax dollars the way you're going to do it. That's point number one. Point number two is the cost allocation plan for Fund Ninety and Ninety-One. Are you still going to go ahead with the deductions payable to the city? And if so, how much is that?
Would you address that, please, city manager?
Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it will be addressed as part of the budget meeting next week.
Well, I, I was under the understanding that it was somewhere, you're going to take the tax money and pay yourself for administration fees in somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars a year for twenty years, is that correct? Something along that line? For the cost allocation?
Um, I don't believe so. I believe that the, uh, the number is closer to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
All right, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, is that?
Roughly.
Is that Fund Ninety, or is that Ninety-One? Are you doing both combined, or are you just doing Fund Ninety, two hundred and fifty, and Fund Ninety-One, two hundred and fifty?
Like I said, I don't have all the numbers in front of me tonight. I wasn't prepared to talk about that. But it will be presented at the budget meeting next week.
Now, I asked the city clerk for a copy of the budget, because I'm not online, and I don't have the privilege to go in online and look at the budget, and they wanted to charge me for the, for the, uh, budget, and I'm here to ask the council if I could get a free copy.
How many pages are there in this?
Well.
What are we talking about?
We have a, we have a fee schedule that pays for the, the cost of service and to pay for the, uh, the cost of.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you to break that, so I, this is, uh, I've got every, I've got every budget.
It's not, it's not the end of tonight, there's an adopted policy, you have to come back at a separate meeting for the council to change that policy.
Um, well, I don't have the privilege of getting it online free, that's my point, so.
There are places you can go, to the library, other places you can go online to access the internet that are free, and you can get copies of it that way.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
You can also view it in the clerk's office as well.
Okay, I can review it in the clerk's office?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comments? If not, we will move to the consent calendar. Do you want to read?
I will read it. Um, we have two items. The first one, the minutes of the meeting of May third, 2011. The second one, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Powers, is there a second?
I'll call that first.
And Councilwoman Singleton.
I'll second.
And Shelton both seconded. Is there any other discussion on this, on this consent calendar? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. It's passed unanimously. Uh, next item?
Next item is the treasurer's report for the period ending March 2011, along as a separate item investment policy for the Galt Redevelopment Agency fiscal year 2011, 2012.
Thank you. Before you, you also have the investment policy for Galt Redevelopment Agency. It is, uh, I can say extremely similar to, to one that you've already passed for the city of Galt. Uh, there, the, not only have the dates changed, but the name has changed to, from the city of Galt to Galt Redevelopment Agency. So there's very, very few changes, it's all the same.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, along with that, um, again, the same responsibilities and authorization come, come with that, okay? Uh, for the treasurer's report for the end of March, um, the, the redevelopment agency has invested, uh, the, uh, their money in the Farmers and Merchants Checking Account and also the State of California Lath Account. And just as a, uh, three-quarters results as far as interest earned, um, is two thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. So, with that, uh, I'll answer any questions, I don't want to pick up a lot more time, so I ask for your approval here this evening on both items.
Are there any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Do we, need to do these separate? Okay, you want to read the first?
The first one is to approve the treasurer's report for the period ending March 2011.
I so move.
Do you have a, a motion by Councilman Cruz, is there a second?
I second.
Vice Mayor Powers has, uh, seconded. Any other discussion? Then I would call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion is passed. Next item?
Uh, the next item is to adopt a resolution approving the investment policy for the Galt Redevelopment Agency fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm making a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Singleton, is there a second?
One second.
Just want a clarification, I think that fiscal year two thousand, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
Did I make a mistake here?
I think you are correct, I think the agenda had it wrong.
Okay.
Thank you for that correction.
Yes.
So, we have a motion, and did we have a second?
We did.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that, other than the date change? Then I would call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne. Aye, motion passes unanimously, we will now adjourn from redevelopment and reconvene to the Galt City Council, city clerk's report.
Okay, before you tonight, we have a couple committee appointments. I can get there, um, and in your staff report, we have actually three, uh, two committee appointments and a SACOG appointment. The first one we'll start with is a, uh, appointment for the commission on aging, there's one vacancy, um, and tonight is to be filled by Councilmember Shelton. We do have one letter of interest, and at this time I ask for direction from Councilmember Shelton.
Yes, it's, uh, June Gilmore, she's lived in the community for several years and been involved with a lot of communities, and I believe that she would do an excellent job for us.
I agree.
I would like to appoint her as my, okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Galt City Council Youth Committee, um, this vacancy is also for Councilmember Shelton. We do have one letter of interest from Russell Flutie, who's in the audience, has been waiting patiently.
There you go.
At this time, we look for direction from Councilmember Shelton.
Yes, Russell, thanks for volunteering. Raise your right hand, no, okay. No, thank you very much for stepping forward, appreciate that.
And the next item, um, kind of split bias, it's a, an alternate position for the SACOG, uh, for SACOG in Sacramento, there is one alternate position available.
I would very much like that, that position officially.
Now, this is, do we need to do this at the council?
This is as a body, yes. So I would actually look for a motion and a second.
I move to put mark on SACOG, permanent.
It's been moved and seconded, any other?
Especially if you volunteer.
Yeah. Uh, any other discussion? If there is no more discussion, I would call for the vote, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Is it appropriate for me to vote?
It is.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Payne.
Aye. So we have an appointment at the alternate, the SACOG.
And we will, uh, send SACOG a letter and let them know that.
Okay.
And just a couple reminders, um, the beautification committee will be meeting this Thursday, May nineteenth, in the city hall community room at three-thirty. A reminder to the entire community that on May twenty-first, out at the Galt Market Grounds, we will be holding our household hazardous waste event along with our shredded event. That's from nine AM to one PM, again at the Galt Market Grounds. Um, on May twenty-third, the Public Safety Committee bimonthly meeting in the Pachetti Community Room at six PM. And we will have our budget study session here next Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, at six PM. And so your, your agenda's wrong there, it should be six PM. And I'm gonna keep going because I'm gonna take us to our next city council meeting. On May twenty-sixth, the Commission on Aging Meeting, five fifteen, in the California Room at the Parks and Market Offices. The city hall offices will be closed in honor of Memorial Day on May thirtieth. That takes us to our next city council meeting. I also wanted to remind people of our Galt Certified Farmers Market. We now have two markets each week. Uh, the one downtown on Lincoln Way between A and C is every Thursday night from five PM to eight PM, and that'll be through August twenty-fifth. Uh, we also have a market out at our Galt Community Park, which is on Walnut and Corillian, and that's Saturday mornings, eight AM to one PM, and that will be held through August twenty-seventh. So, a lot going on.
Yeah, a lot. And I'd also add that, uh, these meetings are open to the public, including the budget meeting. If anyone wants to attend, you can come, enjoy yourself. Uh, let's see, we have, uh, any other comments, or any comments by staff?
Um, just, I'd like to go back into closed session at the end of this meeting to continue discussion on the redevelopment closed session item.
Absolutely, okay. Anything else from staff? Uh, we will now go to comments by city council members, Vice Mayor Powers, would you?
Um, I did, uh, along with the beautification committee meeting, um, they're going to rededicate the roses in front of the post office at one-thirty on Saturday. I personally planted a bush there a while ago in memory of my mother, and they're going to add the names now to the bushes in memory of it. So, we have been invited, and if you'd like to show up, it's at one-thirty in front of the post office on Saturday.
Is this coming Saturday?
Yes, this coming Saturday.
Councilmember, was there anything else?
No, we're good.
Councilmember Singleton.
Uh, I just wanna say, uh, Strawberry Festival last weekend was quite an event, as it usually is. Uh, we had a little problems on Sunday, but, uh, it was a great day, and I got to, uh, give credit to, uh, Terry Shelley and her husband Chuck, they did a great job for the Hot Rod and Bike Show, um, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, did an awesome job putting this thing together, as they do usually every year. So it was a great, fun event, if you missed it, you really missed out.
Anything else, Councilmember Singleton?
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Shelton?
Yes, had two things that I had been involved in, uh, May the sixth, seventh was the annual Shriner's Coal Truck Show.
Mm, hello.
It was a wee bit windy, to say the least, and, uh, if, if you didn't make it, as, as they say, you miss some coal trucks. It was really good. Uh, the other thing I attended last weekend was the thirteenth annual Relay for Life, and, um, I'm going to ask them to come after they have their meeting and get all their funding. I think they, uh, they exceeded their goal, I don't wanna give it out, but I'm gonna ask if they could come and make a short little presentation, you know, with their committee members, I think it would be great. Uh, it was very, as usual, very heartwarming felt, uh, you know, you had tears, you had laughter. They do a fantastic job in the community. It's always at the Galt High School and, um, all the state again, it was their thirteenth annual, so they've been doing it for a number of years. And again, uh, they had some problems with the rain, too. That was it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you.
I'm good, I think I've sat in there for the night.
Yeah, I was just gonna say much. Uh, I would share with you also about the Strawberry Festival. On Saturday morning, we had a very moving tribute to the armed forces. We had many of our, our VFW veterans as well as others that received proclamations from the city as well as, um, Don Nataulay, our favorite county supervisor. And, uh, it was something that I, I would say we should not allocate to one day out of the year, as I know most of us don't, but we keep the thoughts, keeping our thoughts, our armed forces who are defending us around the world. That was very impressive. The other thing I would say, I rode all the buses for transit service one day to check out the, um, um, service and, and the bus drivers were all just as great as they could be. I think we did find that we need to find some better places to, uh, for the, the bus stops. One of them is at the Shell Station in Elk Grove, which I don't know if too many people, it is a decent connecting place, but I don't know too many people that wanna go from Galt to the Shell Station at Elk Grove. The other stop was at, um, Walmart in the Florin Mall area. And to be honest, I'd be afraid to get off the bus there because the area is not the greatest. So, we're looking at possibly going to the Meadow View Depot for RT where, uh, you can take it downtown, um, our, and maybe the Consumers College. What we found from our survey were those were two areas that need to be served better, uh, get our students from Galt to, to the colleges, as well as have a better connection to RT that will take you many places. So I met with the SACOG representative, um, our representative, um, Dolores.
Dolores.
Yeah, great person, enjoyed her a lot. And, um, who else was there? Seems like there was somebody else, too. But anyway, it was a very interesting meeting, I, I hope that we're gonna, um, make our, our, our buses, our, our routes more meaningful, so we get more people riding them, so we can keep them. That's the ultimate goal, 'cause if we don't use them, we can lose them. But, um, it was an interesting, I especially liked the, the route along the delta. It was wonderful, watching, look at the river, I even saw some sturgeon that had been caught there, that was very good. Um, the only other thing I would mention was our youth committee again came through with flying colors, they held a, a benefit dinner for cardiac research, and I don't know, they made well over a thousand dollars, it was so well organized. Our young people were, were dressed, uh, in black pants or skirts, white shirts, there was a gentleman, um, senior at the door in a full suit. Uh, we had, uh, entertainment by one of our students who played the piano, and he was amazing. Also, there was a talk by a cardiac, um, expert, a doctor, and this was put together totally by our youth council, I was so proud of them. Uh, if there are no other comments, I will adjourn the meeting.
Close session.
Oh, sorry, we're not adjourned. You guys get to go home, we're gonna adjourn to closed session, and we will come back and report if you wanna stick around and hear the final report of it. Thank you all for coming, the people in the back row, I especially admire you for sitting
Yeah, you can leave here. You're gonna be here tomorrow evening?
Yes.
Okay. Will, will these doors get locked?
It's off.
But you know what, you might put right back in.